Man. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
No.
Debbie, could you pull up the flag and we'll do the Fudge of Allegiance?
Never had this happen before. Oh.
Okay, please join me in the Fudge of Allegiance.
I'll be in a lot.
Fudge of Allegiance, do the flag of the United States of America.
United States, America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to introduce our guest today. Today, we have Kyle, Kyle Potinsky. He's with Big Brothers and Sisters. Thanks for joining us, Kyle. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
And we also have Bruce De Berry with us today. Thanks for joining us today, Bruce. Appreciate it. Thank you. Let's see, who else do we have here today? We've got a nice crowd today. We've got 21 people, so I'm just seeing if I'm missing anybody.
You have Renee. Renee is here.
Yep, we have our new member Renee. Thanks for joining us, Renee, and welcome to our club.
Thank you. It's good to be part of it.
Anybody else? All right, today in history, I don't think Casey's here. I'm going through the line. Nope, I don't think Casey's here, so I got a couple of things to go over today in history. Um, actually, yesterday, on January 25th, 1905, the largest diamond ever found was found that day. It was 3,106 carats, weighing 1.33 pounds. Boy, that'd be something to find in your backyard, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
They actually ended up cutting it into a few different diamonds, and it was actually presented to Britain's King Edward VII as a birthday gift. Very nice birthday gift. Uh, let's see, and I figured this was something good to bring up. Does anyone know who Edward Jenner was? He died on January 26, 1823. Does anyone know who Edward Jenner was?
Don't have a clue.
Well, I figured it was kind of worth talking about because he actually invented the vaccination. He was the first one to invent the vaccination for smallpox. And back then, they were, they found out that anyone who, what was it, the milk maidens, milkmaids were generally immune to smallpox for some reason, and they discovered because they were getting cowpox. And cowpox was actually a small, a form of smallpox, but it was not as lethal. So he found out that if you took the pus from the blisters and used it as a vaccination, they got immune to smallpox. So that was, he was the first vaccination, and good thing he did that because we're sure he's needing it now, aren't we? Another sad day. One year ago today, Kobe Bryant and his daughter were killed in an airplane accident, so I'm sure everybody knows about that, but sad day for the sports world. And I thought this was worth bringing up. Michigan became a state in the Union on this day back in January 26, 1837, so.
That's the last time they beat Ohio State, I think.
Yeah, actually, it was kind of interesting. The only reason I brought that up because I am a Buckeye fan. Even though I was born in Lansing, Michigan, uh, Michigan had to give up Toledo, the territory of Toledo, to be allowed to enter the states, the Union. But in return, Michigan got the Upper Peninsula. So everyone, a lot of people, you know, how did Michigan get the Upper Peninsula when it was part of Wisconsin? So I don't know how Wisconsin lost out, but they must not have been a state to give that up, but that's how Michigan got the U.P. Think, uh, oh, I got one more thing for you. That's kind of funny. On this day, January 26, 1784, Benjamin Franklin writes a letter to his daughter expressing his disapproval of the bald eagle becoming the, uh, the national, the nation's national symbol. He actually wanted the turkey as the national symbol for, for the nation, saying he didn't like the way bald eagles stole prey from, from other small birds, and he felt the bald eagle was a coward. So he wanted the turkey. So that's what I got in history today. If anybody else has anything they would, they'd like to present, please feel free to do so. Okay, special days, birthdays. I don't have anything on the calendar or it was all earlier in the month as far as anniversaries for joining Rotary and anniversaries of our club members and birthdays. Nothing more in January. If anybody else has any birthdays they'd like to recognize, please speak now. Guess we don't have anything. All right. Humor of the day. Mr. Cockle, do you have anything?
Yes, we do, President Steve. As you're aware, coronavirus jokes are getting to be a dime a dozen. We got two short ones for you this morning. Coronavirus has turned us into dogs. We wander around the house looking for food. We get told no if we get too close to strangers, and we get really excited going for walks and car rides. That's for the dog lovers. And then never in a million years could I have imagined I would go up to a bank teller wearing a mask and ask for money.
Isn't that the truth? Now we all go into banks wearing masks. Thank you, Dr. Cockle. Any happier sad dollars out there?
I got one, Steve. Today is my father-in-law's 86th birthday. Yes, 86. My wife was called the blessing, although I use other words to describe it as a joke, but 86 years old, pretty proud of that.
Well, congratulations. Happy birthday to him. 86 is fantastic.
Does he still like you?
He didn't like me for a long time, but he likes me now, yes.
You've mastered.
Anybody else with some happy dollars?
I got a happy dollar.
Okay.
Can't tell you what it is, and I'm gonna pay again next week, and I'll let you know. The suspense will kill you.
Really? Okay, well, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna be on our toes and wait for that reply next week, then. You can't miss the meeting. I got a happy dollar. Looks like I've moved all 100 tickets that Dave gave me for the reverse raffle. So we have a bunch more that Dave hasn't moved yet. They were gonna need to move. That's my sad dollar. So we're gonna be talking about that a little bit more at the end of the meeting. So, but, uh, yeah, we moved it. So all you people out there that have 10 tickets that you took off my hands, you're not allowed to give them back. You gotta move them. So we still got some time. Uh, anybody else?
Sure, I'll go. Happy dollar. Well, bittersweet. Semester is back in full swing for me. Um, so my eyes are searing with pain from staring at the, you know, screen all day, but I'm happy to be placed at my internship at Summit County Board of Developmental Disabilities this semester and looking forward to learning from my mentor.
Oh, congratulations, Paige. I'm happy for you. Glad you're able to give back to it.
I have a happy dollar.
Sure, go ahead, Renee.
Um, so I, I had contracted my listing I put up in one day that houses are, despite the way the economy is, there are house sales that are still flourishing, and it was a special house because it was, it's an estate of a gentleman who was a World War II vet who had passed away, so it's, it was extra special, so.
Well, congratulations to that. Thanks, Renee, for sharing that. Anybody else? Okay, then we will move on to our featured speaker today. Uh, we have Kyle Potinsky here with us today. Kyle is the Executive Director of the Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Summit, Medina, and Stark Counties, an affiliate of Big Brothers and Sisters of America, the nation's largest donor and volunteer-supported mentoring network. And in this position, Potinsky leads a team of youth development specialists serving 361 children who are matched with an adult volunteer in the community and site-based programs for children ages 6 to 18. Potinsky is focused on helping the organization meet a strategic initiatives of increasing brand awareness, service delivery, and quality in its core programs, financial stability, and board development. Potinsky's passion for mentoring and working with youth, coupled with his diverse work and community impact work, will bode well with, for the agency. Previously, Potinsky served as Regional Director of Community Engagement with the Educational Empowerment Group. In this position, Potinsky led, led lead community engagement initiatives to collect local schools to the community. Potinsky has extensive background in collective impact work during his tenure at United Way of Wayne and Holmes Counties, serving as Director of Community Impact and United Way of Summit County, serving as the manager of health initiatives. Potinsky lives in Copley, Ohio with his wife Emily, his three sons, Owen, Noah, and Luke. Please join me in welcoming Kyle Potinsky.
Thank you all. Can you hear me all right?
Sure can.
All right. So thank you so much for your time to listen to me today. I really appreciate it, and thank you for the great work that Rotary Club is doing in Nodornia Hills, excuse me. With Big Brothers and Big Sisters, it's really our mission to serve all of the kids in the three counties that we serve, not just the urban core. So we are reaching out to all different parts of county because right now during COVID, things are getting very tricky and complicated for kids. And right now, with all the social justice issues going on, and just all the complex issues going on, like the riots, and, and you know, if they don't have a non-judgmental, non-parental caring adult to talk those things through, it can get really complicated for kids. And those are the things that really keep me up at night and really keep me passionate about our mission for Big Brothers and Big Sisters. So I do have a presentation for you guys to go through. Could I share my screen here? I think.
Sure.
Right. Right. Let me know if, whoops, that did not pop up how I wanted it to. Right. See if I can bring this back. Oh, that is. Always have issues with technology here. Let me see. Just disconnect this other monitor here.
I think if you go to slideshow at the top, then it'll give you the option for full screen.
Okay. I had a dual monitor plug-in here. Pardon me for one moment. And then here we are. All right, so Big Brothers and Big Sisters, we are one of the largest mentoring organizations in the nation. We are an affiliate of our national organization. Every time we make a, a new match, we do post it on our social media page. We, we have about 100 matches right now. And so, you know, this is just an example of our match, of our matches. So I just kind of like, with a lot of these Zoom meetings, you know, I just want to make it interactive. So I do have some opening questions for you all. So the first question I wanted to pose to the group is who, like, who made a difference in your personal life? And the second follow-up question to that was, was it a long-term relationship, or was it a one-and-done type meeting? So just want to throw that out to you guys. What do you think?
Well, for, for me, I had a youth pastor. I was involved with a faith community, and he was like long-term in my life for five, six, seven, eight years. And so because I'm out of a faith community, I had several loving, caring adults, including youth pastor that I, yeah, I love this man and what he did for me.
Great. Um, yeah, and I feel like a lot of us, it's that person that digs into your life year by year, month by month, that really you see those life-changing results happen. Very rarely do we get changed through like a self-improvement one-day seminar, like a Tony Robbins-type thing. It's that person that's digging into your life, being there through the good times and the bad. Recently, I did a Bridges Out of Poverty training about a couple of years ago through the Pro Football Hall of Fame. And the Pro Football Hall of Fame, they talked about the Hall of Famers and the role of mentorship with them, and a lot of them came, came through, you know, rough backgrounds, and they really pointed to that one individual. They're like kind of a standpoint in their lives where they can go left, or they could go right. And they had that mentor in their lives that, you know, they, they talk through complex problems, they talk through situations, what's going on in their lives, and they decide to go down that right path. And like, that's what our core of our organization is about. Now, we have like, in the counties that we serve, we, you know, kids are, they're complicated, and there's a lot of complicated things going on right now. And a lot of kids are going down the wrong path, and they're making the wrong friends or doing the wrong things. And how do we work together as a community to get our youth going into that other direction, helping them realize that their potential, realize and achieve their potential? Because their zip code doesn't have to be, they're, they're kind of where they're gonna end up at in terms of like life expectancy and things of that nature. So with, uh, so I want to go through like, what is going on with the youth in COVID-19 right now? Because right now, during the pandemic, our agency's seen a lot of different things. We're seeing families move. We're seeing an increase in mental health with kids. Uh, we're seeing an increase in depression and an increase in anxiety. We're also seeing an increase in isolation for kids. A lot of kids are stuck at home, learning, through remote learning, or they're just kind of isolated and they can't interact with friends like they did pre-pandemic. Um, we're also seeing a decrease in calls to children's services. So we know abuse and trauma is happening, but a lot of the times, the, the kids, when they're going to school, a lot of the times these calls happen because the teachers are their mandated reporters. And right now, we're just seeing a decrease just across the board throughout the nation in calls to children's services because those calls aren't happening. We're also seeing an increase in trauma and a decrease in academics just throughout the board. We're also seeing an increase, an alarming increase in suicidal ideations from kids as low as second or third grade. And that's just through our conversations we're having with school counselors and community-based counselors and things of that nature that, you know, these kids are, they're in a rough spot right now. And, you know, I always say, you know, to help these complex community problems, like one organization didn't start the problem, and one organization can't fix it. So it really takes that community coming together and just doing, doing something. Get involved in a kid's life, or get involved in another life. Let me try and add up here. All right. So. You froze. All right, so our mission at Big Brothers and Big Sisters is to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and promise of youth. Uh, we do this in a couple of different ways at Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and so we do that through our site-based programs, which is a school-based program, and also our flagship program, which is really our community-based mentoring program. And our vision is that all youth achieve their full potential. So a lot of the kids that we serve, you know, they're, they're coming from maybe a single-parent family, or they're coming from a rough background, and they need that person in their lives that can just be that positive person to really get them on the right path. And the great thing about our program is, you know, we really just try to match our, our littles and our bigs with, with similar interests. So like, what, you know, if you're interested in football, and you love football, and you love the Browns and the Buckeyes, you know, there's a kid out there that I'm on my list that loves the Browns and the Buckeyes. And just showing up is half the battle for some of these kids, just showing up, connecting with them, you know, sending them a text on your lunch, or sending or meeting with them via Zoom in the evenings for, for 30 minutes or an hour, and that can make all the difference in a kid's lives. Um, and we have the data to back that up. We've been doing mentoring locally here for 70 years, and Big Brothers and Big Sisters has been around for about 100 years nationally. So we're the largest and oldest mentoring organization. We have all that data from the 100 years of us doing it to show our, our model works. So what are, what, you know, what does it look like to be in Big Brothers and Big Sisters? Like, what do we do? So like I said before, we do have a community-based program. That's really what Big Brothers and Big Sisters is known for, and that's where we match a, an adult ages 18 and over in the community to a little that age range is 6 to 18 in the community, and we match them up in a mentor relationship. Our average match length for those is about three and a half years, and we don't have a cutoff in that program. You know, once the little turns 18, we have to actually, we stop our follow-up services, but the matches can continue to meet. So when I'm around in the community and I have my Big Brothers and Big Sisters gear on, I get approached by, quite a bit by individuals saying, you know what, I, I was a little, when I was a little girl, and I still meet with my big sister, and this, you know, she was 60, and her big sister was 80, and they're still meeting, you know, she went to her wedding, and she just went to her mom's 100th birthday. So there's really no cutoff for that community-based program if you want to continue to meet past their 18 years. We do offer school-based programming that's in-person at the schools. That program is on hold due to COVID-19. But right now, we have to change all of our programming around to accommodate the virtual environment. So what we're doing is we're doing a virtual site-based program. And then that's open to all the schools in our three counties that, you know, if, if they want to take part in that program. 100% of the services that we offer are free of charge to the littles and the bigs. Um, so the virtual site-based program is where we match the elementary schooler or middle schooler up with a high school big, and they, and they meet on a weekly basis. They form that relationship, and they just talk through problems. Like, a lot of our littles are, and big conversations are dealing around the idea of bullying, and, and how has that changed? And, you know, they're there for those kids, and they, and they do say that, you know, things do get better. Um, you know, your elementary school years, they don't have to shape your high school years, and, and it's a really great program for kids to get involved in and just, you know, have that caring person they can turn to. Um, we also offer a Bigs in Blue program that is for law enforcement officers to serve in. So we match a law enforcement officer up as a big and a little in the community. Um, that is a new program for our organization. We've been doing that for about, we just started this year, and our goal is to make 14 matches this year. So with everything going on with the police and the community, we just, it's just a really great program to give a law enforcement officer's perspective of what is the individual lives of, of the kids, and also the kids get a different view of law enforcement. Then we also offer community-based trainings to churches and organizations to better understand like the low-income, like at-risk population. Um, so we offer a Bridges Out of Poverty training. That is a long, like, full-day training, really gives you the understanding of the complexities of poverty. We also have a mentorship, a Bible study that we can send out to churches. We also do a 45-minute Stack the Deck training. Um, that is like a virtual poverty simulation training that we offer to community organizations just to better understand where kids are coming from. Um, and those are all free of charge as well, because the more you understand where kids are coming from, the better off that we can be to serve them as a community. So. If you want to be a big, just kind of want to overview what it takes to be a big. So there is a time commitment to join our organization. Um, so there is a one-year time commitment, and the reason why we ask that is because we see change, like, change takes time. So relationships need to develop, and that usually from our data from 100 years, we know that a year is the minimum commitment that we need for those, for those kids. Um, so we asked for a one-year time commitment. Um, we also have some ground rules and activities that we ask you to follow, but really, if you're, if you're talking, what is the core, what does that look like? So we asked that you touch base with your little twice a month right now, and that's, and those things are all virtual, just due to COVID-19. So you could, you know, you could zoom them, you can text them, you can call them. When COVID does reside and we start to get back to normal, we will resume in-person meetings. Uh, through those in-person meetings, you can take your little to the museum, Indians, Cleveland Browns game. Uh, we do a lot of work with the local sports agencies, so we get free tickets going, so we can sponsor some littles and bigs to go there, and just really expose kids to events and things that they may have, have ever seen. Um, so for some kids that are in our program, you know, a vacation for them is going up to Cleveland because, you know, they're riding the public transit. They've never been out of their neighborhood, and to go see something like a museum or a Browns game, or a Cleveland Indians game, or even just an Akron Arrows game, excuse me, Rubber Ducks, it really opens up their eyes to this giant world that they were not exposed to previously. Um, then we, so then we match, so we also match you with a little with similar interests in geographic regions. Um, so we're always recruiting bigs and littles for our organization. We have a big goal this year to double the match size of our organization. Um, I just took the realm here at Big Brothers and Big Sisters about six months ago, so took the reins in the pandemic and just trying to get out there and meet the community and get these kids the mentors that they need, because, you know, things in our counties are, they're, they're trending downwards for kids, and part of that solution is having caring adults in their lives. So the enrollment process, if you want to be a big, you inquire online at our website. That is mentorwithme.org. It's really a simple process. You put your name, contact information, and then we reach out to you and just ask you some questions. Anytime you match an adult with a youth in the community, there could be, uh, youth safety is always paramount to our organization. So the application is very lengthy, and we have to do that on purpose, just so we make, so we, not only not, we do that on purpose to ensure the safety of the little, but also the big. So the application is pretty lengthy. After that, we go through a reference check on you. So we, we asked that you provide three references that we can reach out to. Um, then we do conduct a background check for all of our bigs. Um, so that is a federal FBI and BCI. Uh, we also run social media check, DMV check, and also local records checks. Um, because we want to ensure that our matches are safe, and we're not putting anyone at risk. Um, there are, you know, some youth safety concerns. Anytime you match a, an adult to a youth in the community. So that is the reason why we have those things. After that, you go through an interview with our enrollment and matching specialist, Lisa Austin. That interview usually lasts about an hour to an hour and a half, and that is all done via Zoom. Um, and that's really just to get to know you, get to know your interests. Why do you join the organization? What do you hope to get out in the match? Um, just so we can match you with that kid that is on our waitlist, because we have about 100 kids that need mentors right now, and we're not even cracking the nut of how many kids that need mentors in our county. Um, we could triple the organization in the number of matches and still not even be at the need to the kids that need it right now. Um, so you go through the interview, and then you have your match meeting ceremony where you get to meet your little brother or sister, and then from there, you get to interact with them and touch base with them. And that can really be done at your convenience. So if you want to set a date, you know, if your, your little's remote learning, you can do it on your lunch break. Uh, you could do it, you know, in the evening on Saturday morning. That's all up to you. Um, so our, our kids really need caring adults in their lives right now. And, you know, if you, when you look at really hard, complex community problems. complex community problems, um, and you look at how do we make a difference in our youth today? It often looks like a daunting, crazy task. But I would say if you could do for one kid what you wish you could do for every kid, man, that's where we see great community change happen. So what are some ways that you can involve, like, say you don't want to be a big, say you don't have the time or you don't want to commit? Um, there's some other ways that you can get involved. Um, so you could, we always are looking for people to serve on our community advisory council. Because we're looking to see how do we serve kids, not only in, in, in the urban core, but also like I want to serve kids throughout all of our counties. Cause you know, we just don't have problems in Akron or Canton or Medina City. Like, there's the, you know, there's issues in Nordonia Hills, there's issues in Copley, there's issues in um North Canton or Jackson. We just wanted to like, listen to the community, listen to what, you know, the faith community is saying or other businesses are saying. Um, and just really trying to meet that need. And that's really the purpose of that community advisory council. Um, and they, we usually meet four times a year on that community advisory council. Um, and it's really listening to the needs of the community, but also like thinking of, you know, what are some new ways that we can reach the community? Um, to better serve them, um, and to better serve our youth. Um, you could also um serve on our board. Um, we're always looking for diverse board members with different views. Um, and we can have those conversations. Um, and then another great opportunity to get involved is we do these events every month. Um, they're called Keep Kids Connected Events. And um, really the story behind those is to really keep kids engaged and connected during COVID. Um, so we ship out kids' activity boxes. And we bring them together on Zoom with other kids and with breakout rooms. And we just tried to do an activity, have fun with them for an hour or two. And we're just looking for, you know, interested community organizations or businesses that, you know, if you want to talk about, you know, your path to entrepreneurship and how that led to you owning a business. And um, you know, cause kids right now, th- you know, there's eight-year-olds that are multimillionaires. And what's saying that, you know, a kid from um where you're at has an idea that could change the world. Um, so just looking for individuals at it to attend our virtual events or speakers on those. So you can also support us. Um, so there's on our website, if you want to support us, you, you can do that with a one-time donation. Or, you know, if you're a business or organization and you feel like a need to get involved and you want to sponsor a match. Uh, you can sponsor a match and what we'll do for you is we'll send you quarterly updates on the match, how it's going, how the progress is going. We'll send you a picture of them. Um, you have social media exposure that, you know, this match is sponsored by, you know, your business. Um, showcase that at y- your place of employment. Um, you can also attend a Big Brothers and Big Sisters event or um sponsor a site-based program. Um, so Big Brothers and Big Sisters, we are really trying to um get out and meet the needs of our youth and community. Um, and we have, you know, we have a big mission in front of us. Um, I have big goals and aspirations for that organization. So our goal this year is to double the organization. Um, but in two thousand twenty-five, I want us to be around five hundred to seven hundred matches, and that's growth and that's sustainability. And that happens through people supporting us and getting involved in our organization. So, you know, if you like what we're saying here, you can be a big, or if you want to get involved in any other way. Um, you know, we are, we have micro internships, um, you know, for high schoolers or for college students. Get involved in, in ways to give back to their community. Um, so with some of our outcomes, you know, we know our program does work. You know, if you look at some of our, our, our outcomes, we, we do see a decrease um in uh, you know, referrals to disciplin- to discipline in school, or we see an increase in attendance rates. Um, we also, this is some of our national data. Um, but we can also drill this down to geographic zip code data to show the impact of our program um i- in, in your region. Um, so right now, um, we are in a, a rebuilding phase of the organization. And um, things are going really well for us here. Um, but we just want to continue to meet the needs of the youth as they, as we kind of tread the line and, and, and trying to figure out COVID and, 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 you know, we're going to see these trends continue a couple of years after this pandemic. Um, so, you know, caring adults in these kids' lives can help them navigate those things. Um, so we, we, we do our, a program measurement through like a couple of different surveys. Um, so they're nationally-known surveys. I mean, it really just tra- tracks the strength of the match and also the in- incomes, excuse me, the outcomes of the match. Um, so we know that um our, our matches are progressing. Every single, every single time a Big Brothers and Big Sisters, uh, your match, excuse me, every single time a match happens, um, the match does have uh youth outcome development goals. Um, so that's something the big and little work towards together. So I did want to open it up to any questions or, or, or comments. So I know I'm, I'm running short on time here and I want to be uh cognizant of everyone's time.
Yeah, Kyle, I have a question. Um, I'm pretty familiar with um Big Brothers, Big Sisters as a whole. Um, I know a few years ago, there was some restructuring with the organization. Um, and like some smaller counties um de-affiliated just because of um you know, requirements. How did it affect um Summit County?
So um, a lot of, so the way we work is we're through a, a national organization. And we have to abide by the national standards of practice and the service delivery model. So every Big Brothers and Big Sisters, we operate the same in every single county. Um, and some organizations or some smaller affiliates, they couldn't meet those obligations. So they had to de-affiliate with our national organization. Here locally, um, we actually merged um in, I think about the nineties. So Big Brother, we did have a Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Canton and one of Akron, and there was also one of Medina. And what we did in the nineties is we actually merged all of those organizations together. Um, so right now, our organization, uh, we are compliant with national standards. Um, so we serve Summit, Medina and Stark Counties. And um, we will be, uh, we do unofficially serve Wayne County. Um, and we're looking to bring them on board here in a couple of years after we build up staff capacity.
Perfect, thank you.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Um, so where do the littles come from?
So we get a lot of referrals through the school districts. So I attend all the family children's first meetings where the superintendents are on board. Um, so we get a lot of referrals from school counselors. We also get a lot of referrals from children's services. Um, we also, it, so children's services, school districts, um faith organizations, and also just some parents uh refer their kids because they know that, hey, maybe the positive person in their life or their kid is struggling. Um, so we get referrals from all over the place. Um, the, the program is free to any kid that needs it. And I always say that when you think of Big Brothers and Big Sisters, you traditionally think of like at-risk kids. But all kids need a mentor right now, regardless of income or, you know, social status. Um, things are complicated right now. And even if you look at the um, the income spectrum of, income spectrum, on the higher-end incomes, you know, parents may be there physically, but they may not be there mentally for their kids. Um, so those kids need help too. Um, so that's, in a long story longer, that's where we get referrals from.
And um, are the matches always like boys to the man and girls to the woman?
Yes. Yes, and we have to do that just due to safety concerns. Um, but we also have um a new program here. Um, it's called Couples Matching. Um, so there, you know, if you're a, a, a couple and you want to mentor a kid, um, that is the only time where we allow um those relationships to happen.
And then I have one last one. Um, and do you recommit after each year with the same child? Or did you get a different child after a year? Or can you stay with the same child? And like, you just re-sign up every year then, or?
So uh you, when you sign up, you're, you are stuck, you are, I wouldn't say stuck, but you are matched with that child. Um, until that you, you either end the match relationship or the little match ends match relationship. Now, if you're matched with a kid and you're just not clicking and they're not clicking with you, like, you can be rematched. Uh, so it goes both ways. Sometimes the littles are, don't match with the bigs and the bigs don't match with the littles. Um, and that happens, just, you know, humans are complicated. Um, so we, but generally speaking, you do same, stay with that same person year after year. Um, and that's where we really, we see the greatest outcomes and indicators. Because it's that person, it's their, their little, the, the ride or die with them that, you know, I'm going to be there with you in the good times, I'm going to be there with you in the bad. You know, if you're getting bullied at school, or if you didn't hit this um grade, or, you know, you didn't get into your school of choice. You know, I'm still going to be there for you. And that's, you know, i- in these kids' lives, that, that's exactly what they need.
Thank you.
Kyle, you said you had currently a hundred kids that need to be matched up. Is that just some county or is that all three of the counties that you represent?
So that's currently all kids that are uh for all three counties. Um, right now, from just doing preliminary research, the, the needs on marketing, uh, the, the needs for mark, uh, excuse me, the needs for mentors in our counties easily triples that. Um, but it's just getting out there and, you know, making sure our, uh, the kids know about our program. Um, so I, I, so right around a hundred for right now.
Okay. Anybody else have some questions for Kyle?
Um, the, so the information about the, like, the hundred students, like, um, is there a way to know, or would you be able to tell us, maybe you wouldn't know right offhand, but like, are there five of them that live next door to our businesses and our place of residence? I mean, there, is there any way to know, like, there's, hey, there's like six of them right here that have already found your organization that are looking for someone? And how can we go after helping uh recruit or find big brothers for kids that are like right in our neighborhood?
Yeah, so um, really, it starts uh with, so yes, I can give you zip code level data on like a minute-by-minute basis of, you know, if we do have kids i- in your neck of the woods, I can absolutely do that. Um, if you inquire to our organization, we can, we can give you that zip code demographic data. Um, and also just an awareness for, for churches and agencies to know, like, hey, a- and also businesses that, you know, you know, kids that are struggling that may need a mentor, you know, you always send them our way. Um, and we, we will, we are currently conducting uh community outreach to all parts of the county. Um, it's a little hard right now in COVID because we can't be in person. Um, but so we can definitely send you some um, some data on that.
Thank you. Anybody else have some questions for Kyle? Well, Kyle, thank you very much. Your organization is certainly much needed, especially in the, the times that we're fighting right now. Um, I'm sure some of these kids, um, you know, are, are just lost when the, when the social, you know, distancing and, and socialization is just not there right now. Um, that, that's got to be causing a lot of issues for some of these kids when they just can't be with people. So um, hopefully we can uh, uh, get over this thing and you can uh get together with these kids and, and, and kids with, that aren't just on computers.
Thank you. And I, I really appreciate everyone's time and thanks for uh just um be a uh hearing, hearing about our organization. Um, we really appreciate it. And, uh, you know, if there's anything that we can do to, to help out, please let me know.
Thanks, Kyle. Everyone join me in thanking Kyle. We're going to go over a couple of things here, Kyle. You're more than welcome to hang around, but if you'd like to leave, uh, uh, you're more than welcome, but uh we're also going to be, we'd like to send you a rotary tumbler uh as a sign of our appreciation. Uh, if you're a coffee drinker or just a nice tea drinker, it's a great mug to keep things hot or cold. Um, please send your address to where we can send the mug to, uh, to Debbie, if you would, and we'll get one sent out to you.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kyle. Thanks again. All right, everybody, we have just a few announcements. Uh, as far as the dictionaries for the third graders, everything went real well. Uh, the last four cases are going to be delivered to Rushwood Elementary on Friday. Uh, but they've all been distributed to all the uh elementary schools and St. Barnabas School. Uh, so we just have Rushwood to distribute them to, but uh we're starting to get pictures in of some of the kids using them. So uh, uh, the appreciation is certainly there. It's been a lot of fun to, to see their faces. And all the teachers are saying, boy, we're, we're looking forward to next year where you can actually be there and present the dictionaries like you did in the previous year. So um, it's still going over well and the kids seem to really like them. So we'll continue getting the pictures out and we'll send pictures to everybody. Um, uh, as far as the storefronts, uh, I saw a couple emails on our Facebook saying it was, it was uh Safety Town would, would be fixed up. Well, uh, we're getting, trying to get the word out there. We are fixing up Safety Town. Uh, most of the signs are all done now, or the storefronts are all done. As soon as the weather breaks, uh, we'll be asking for volunteers and we'll get this finished up. But uh, I think we're making progress on Safety Town. Um, next February second, uh, I know Jacob's trying to get our Ohio Treasurer to come and speak. Um, I think he's still working on that. Uh, Jacob will, uh, and John will inform me if that's going to happen and we'll get an update on that when we
Yeah, I'll keep you updated on that, Steve.
Okay, great. Yeah. But we'll, uh, when we send the uh agenda up next week, you'll see where the speaker is. And the biggest thing we need to talk about is the reverse raffle. Uh, tickets are, are selling well so far. The, the hundred tickets that, that Dave gave me are all out there right now. Um, so anybody that, if you do have the, the ten, some of them have ten tickets. Uh, Joe Clark, he went out there, he's been the, uh, distributing the, he's all over the place. Um, but if they're sold, uh, get the tickets back. So Dave and I can start adding up all the names and try and stay ahead of this thing. Um, but we do have like eighty more tickets to sell. So Dave, you want to uh chime in on that?
Yeah, I, I'm holding eighty tickets. I'm also multitasking with an infant here, so if I jump off the screen, I'm just catching her before she falls. Um, so, yeah, I have eighty. Steve needed twenty for him and Paige. So that would put us down to sixty. So, yeah, sell, sell, sell.
Yeah, so bottom line is, I'm going to pick up a few more tickets from Dave uh prior this afternoon. Um, but we need everyone to sell tickets. So whoever needs tickets, let us know. Um, like I said before, I will drop them off for you. So just uh text me, call me, email me, email Dave and, and we'll get tickets to your house so you can get these sold.
Hey Steve, I want to note, we were working on the uh sideboards and bingo. Any Rotarian out there that has any electronic information out on how that might work, we're still trying to work through those details.
Yeah, so the bottom line is, what we're trying to figure out is, you know, we can set up a credit card on the Eventbrite and stuff like that. Uh, the challenge we're looking at, and I've been going at it to see if there's a way. Whenever someone buys a main board ticket or a sideboard ticket, they have to be issued a number. That's, you're not just buying a ticket, buying, like bingo cards. We can sell the bingo cards. That's no problem because it's not a certain number. But we have to figure out a way that somebody can buy sideboard numbers and then be issued a number. Otherwise, the only other option is to do it the day of the show. And uh, sure, they can pay for it on their credit card, but we, we were trying to get sales out ahead of time. It'd be great. We had all the sideboards sold before the event even started.
What about, what about just like a big fifty-fifty?
That's an option too, if we have to. Uh, we're just trying to figure out as many ways to generate money. Cause quite frankly, this is going to be our only fundraiser, so uh, this is our, you know, this is our big one. We got to try and make it as successful as possible. So we have about five and a half weeks to uh get this right. So any ideas, drop an email to Dave and I and uh how we can make this work uh via credit card. So we can pay for these ahead of time. But yeah, fifty-fifty, we'll definitely be doing that a year or two, huh, Dave? So, but we'll be setting up an account virtually. We just got to figure out how to do this. So any, any tips on how to do that, they appreciate it.
Are the tickets, um, is it like a book of six or a certain amount, or they tend to book, or how are they sold?
Renee, you can buy as many as you, if you want to buy one, two, three, four, whatever you want.
Are they a dollar a ticket, a ten dollars a ticket, or?
They're fifty dollars each for the main.
Fifty dollars for a ticket, okay.
That's the main board ticket.
Right. And then what we're trying to do is do sideboards, which are usually two, three and five dollars. Um, but the main board, uh, like Dave said, we're mostly like going to have around sixty left. Um, so, you know, if, if you just said, okay, I'll take two, I mean, a lot of our members have done that, you know, okay, I'll, my wife and I, we'll take one each. Uh, uh, my daughter took one, uh, you know, there's no, there's no set number on, you have to buy My daughter took one, you know, there's no, there's no set number. You have to buy, you can buy as many as you want. If it's just one or two, fine. A lot of the members grabbed ten thinking they could sell them. And like I told Jacob the other day, he grabbed ten. I told him he's not allowed to return them.
Did you say that? I don't remember that.
Say that, Jacob. So, and, you know, but in truth, if you are having trouble selling them, we, we need them back sooner than later. Because if you can't sell them, we'll hopefully find someone that can. So please, everyone, get involved on this.
We're now down to fifty-five. I just added a commitment for five.
Nice. See, that's what we need.
Okay, I'm going to lock one. I'm going to do one.
Okay, that, that's great.
I'm still working, I've given that application.
But just again, just drop us an email. In fact, I had one of my employees that's working remotely. She just sent me a check in the mail and I, and I sent her, emailed her a scanned copy of her tickets. So, you know, it, it can be done that way too. It doesn't, nobody even has to come in touch with anything, mail a check in.
Addie just asked me if she could buy a ticket. Is there an age requirement?
No.
She's adorable.
Of course she can have a ticket, grandpa. I think it'd be a great birthday present. Okay, one last thing. We're going to be stopping over at Campus Life and we're going to be taking Michael's picture. To honor the donation that we made to Campus Life. We got the big check. We did it with our friends over at the Emergency Assistance Center last week. Today, we're going to stop in and take our picture with our big check with Michael. So I see Michael's looking real good today. So I'm going to go do my hair and grab the big check and stop in. Bill Klingenberg is going to stop by. He's our, a grand photographer. So anybody that wants to stop by and be a part of it, we're going to get there at about one thirty. So anyone that would like to join us, feel free to do so. Does anybody else have anything to add that I may have forgotten? All right, great. Would everybody join me in the four-way test? Debbie, could you bring that up, please? All Rotarians, please join me in the four-way test of the things we think, say, and do.
Think, say, and do.
Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your week. Sell lots of tickets and we'll see you next week. Thanks again.